Good evening, everyone. I'm Debbie Abel and I'm going to start the East Whiteland Township Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, August 26, 2020. I apologize for the lack of video here, at least on my part, having a little connection issue. So are, well, do we want to do the pledge? I don't know if anybody has a flag. Do you want to?
There is a flag that our video folks can put on the TV, want to. I know it makes for an awkward standing and sitting and pledging, but we can do that if you'd like.
Okay, let's do it. I mean, I have a flag in my conference room, but I don't know what everybody else has. So we will stand and do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you, everyone.
I just want to remind everyone that we're being recorded and livestreamed via the township website. So there will be a record of this on the website later, and of course, minutes will be prepared as well.
Okay, so how about we approve our meetings, our meeting minutes from our June 24 meeting? Has everybody read them? Does anybody have any issues, changes?
I'm good with them.
That being said, somebody want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the June 24, 2020 meeting minute.
I'll second.
Motion made by Peter, seconded by Todd. Thank you very much, motion carries. All right, our first order of business tonight is we're going to go through two development First one would be Duckling's Early Learning Center, which is Plainbrook Partners LLC, and it is a preliminary final land development application for a 11,000 square foot children's daycare facility and parking lot with stormwater management and associated improvements. It is located at 105 Church Road, and it is within the R1 residential district. Who is here for Duckling's?
If I just let in Vic Kelly, who's the engineer for the applicant, give him a minute to get situated. Vic, do you know if anyone else from your team is calling in and what their, there's a couple of phone numbers I have in the waiting room.
No, Scott, Scott Risbon from Plainbrook Partners has a conflict tonight, so he could not make it. So I will be representing them.
All right. Before we get started, sorry, maybe I'll just let these two phone numbers in to ask them to identify themselves in case they're here for that item or they're members of the, they wouldn't be members of the public, so they would be probably with another application. On second thought, why don't we let them sit?
Okay.
So yeah, Vic, if you want to kind of take it over from there.
Oh, all right. I'm sorry, I kind of missed, I missed the beginning there. Um, I guess I'll just kind of give a little history of where we are. About a year and a half ago, we made application. The property is about two acres or so at 105 Church Road, between Church Road, west of 401 and adjacent to the on-ramp, the 202 on-ramp, next to the Hoover Financial Building, up slope of that. And the property is zoned R1 and was, did not make a very good residential use. So we went to the zoning hearing board. We actually went before the planning commission and the board of supervisors to seek their support as well, to rezone it to a daycare, which was supported, and we did get the relief that we needed. From that point, we went on to land development, and in the land development process, we determined that there were some steep slopes, prohibitive steep slopes, within the church road right-of-way, which is actually the township property, but it was determined that since the disturbance was for our project, that we would need a variance for that as well. And the need was for allowing the site distance for our entrance onto or into the site. So over the last year and a half, we've secured the variances, but we've been working with the township staff and the township consultants and ironing out all the engineering issues, stormwater issues. We've been, we've submitted plans multiple times to DEP for the MPDS, which we feel we're very close to securing. We have review letters from Arrow of August 18th and from McMahon on August 19th, and essentially, all the items in those letters, we feel are items that we can comply with. Therefore, we're seeking a recommendation for a preliminary slash final approval, and I can answer any questions or I also need to, or we also need to look at some of the waivers as well or discuss the waivers as well, because we're seeking, I think, six or so waivers that need to be addressed by the planning commission also. So however you guys feel best, again, this Zoom thing is, everybody likes to do it a little bit different, whatever your pleasure is.
I have some questions, if I could start. Is that okay, Deb?
All right, go ahead, Peter.
On the McMahon letter for this question about item number two as conditional approval, we recommend that in the township monitor traffic operations. And basically, if they're unsatisfactory, how, this is a question to you, Vic and Zachary, of how can we, how will they work together to make sure that everything is good and safe?
Well, Peter, I'll be honest with you. When I saw that, that comment, I was a little concerned as well. It seems very, very open-ended, but in talking to Zach and Chris, I think the intent there is what we're doing, and you can see on this plan that Zach just brought up, is we have some shoulder lane markings, so that it's essentially, the road is essentially three lanes wide there. So the concern is if we have somebody heading south on Church Road, making a left into the site, is there ample room, just as Zach just highlighted, to get around the car that's making the left so that you're not creating an issue? And in discussing with those two guys, that's really what it boiled down to. If there's a better way that, that we need to change gore striping in the line work or some of the shoulder work, that's really the intent of that comment number two, as I understand it.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, it would be more, I would say, like soft improvements, maybe signage or some sort of notice for people coming around the turn, things that would be not like physical hardscape improvements, like modifying the driveway altogether would be the idea.
And I guess my other and probably the last question is, what do they plan on making the sidewalk out of, which I think is a great idea to continue it upon the west side of Church Road?
The west side of Church Road up to Moore Road was just going to be a paved sidewalk trail.
Just McCaffrey?
I'm sorry?
Just Blacktop?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and actually Zach has pointed me to, there are some specific sections in your township codes where we will institute those details on the plan.
Vic, the sidewalk that it's connecting to, what is that made of? Is that asphalt or is that concrete?
I'm almost positive the one up at Moore Road is, is concrete, and Zach, I think it's, I'm sorry, paved, and I believe it's paved along the, this section of church until it gets into the townhouse. Is that, is that right? Zach, do you recall?
I'm pretty sure that's concrete there in front of the townhomes.
In front of the townhomes?
On Church Road, it's concrete.
And then it's paved in on Moore Road?
I don't know about Moore's Road, but I know it's concrete along Church Road.
Yeah, I believe the existing sidewalk segments are all concrete, so we would be tying in asphalt to concrete. Not ideal, but I think the idea of them extending such a long sidewalk to connect that existing, we wanted to be sensitive to the costs and the long-term maintenance obligation that'll be on the township moving forward.
Yeah, and I also think it gives a little more flexibility with some of the utilities that we might have to get around and that sort of thing.
Yeah, it's shown as a pretty straight shot, but I think there's probably, when we get in the field, there may have to be some meandering around tree roots and poles and ground utility and manholes, so.
And the letter looks pretty good. It doesn't, doesn't seem to be any major issues here.
My letter is mostly administrative comments, agreements, and construction cost opinion, permits, things like that. So yeah, all the technical issues have been addressed.
You're good with all of, all of the recommendations of Arrow, Vic, right?
I am, yes.
One thing that came up recently is the, some of the landscaping out along the frontage. Can we just confirm that there won't be any sideline issues caused by any of the newly installed trees? We could also maybe field verify some of that prior to planting, but just something to keep in mind during construction.
Sure, and I think if, on the plan that you are showing, we do show the, the sight line for the sight distance, and the trees are behind that, but we can confirm that as they're installed for sure, Zach.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
I just want to get back to the sidewalk real quick. I'm looking at the plan up on the screen, and I see at the top heading down is, that is the existing sidewalk where it's pebbled looking?
That's proposed.
That's the proposed?
Yes.
And then where's the existing? I'm not seeing, is it, is it around the corner?
Yes. Yeah, it's, I don't know, Zach, does the, does the, I don't know if that particular plan shows it going all the way. Yes, there it is. Well, it's close. I think we might, we may have added that to another sheet there, but the intent, we do show it tying into the existing paving, or trail rather, on Moore Road. And we are agreeing to make that connection. This was kind of a trade-off when we were talking with township staff. It didn't make sense to put it on the east side of church because it doesn't go anywhere, but making the connection or the link between the townhomes and then the sidewalk up at Moore did make more sense, but it was a lot farther, which is why there was a little compromise with using the paved sidewalk in lieu of the concrete.
Is there any thought to a crosswalk there at the entrance to the Early Learning Center or markings for crossing for residents who may be walking their kids over in the morning?
Actually, there was a lot of discussion about it and kind of the conclusion, and Zach jumping in here if I misspeak, but kind of the conclusion at the end of the day was it opened up a huge can of worms from the public safety aspect where now everything had to be ADA compliant, and it, it just snowballed into, into many more issues that seemed, we already have ADA compliance internal, so we wanted to leave well enough alone, so to speak.
Essentially, by providing a crosswalk or a sidewalk from the entrance into the site, it would have required them to make that also ADA compliant because it's accessing the public way. It's a way that somebody could navigate to the site. That was called out by codes and life safety, so it really didn't seem to have a lot of benefit. And so between, between the fact that it didn't seem to have a ton of benefit in the existing, or the other issues it create, we thought it was probably better off to just have people, since they're most likely going to be driving into the site anyway, enter the site that way. We also-
I agree with that analysis. I'd say 90% of the time or more, people are going to drive because they want to have that child safety seat, and somebody else may come to pick them up, who knows?
Right.
Yeah. I did a lot of that picking up and dropping off.
I know for a fact there's a lot of children in that neighborhood, a lot, so.
There are, and I think the other thing that we talked about was having a mid-block crosswalk like that isn't ideal necessarily. So I think operationally, Vic, feel free to jump in, but I think if it turns out that there's a fair number of students coming from that neighborhood, that they're likely going to have to have somebody out there kind of policing that anyway to get people across safely. So just the stripes on the road may not have really gotten, had the desired effect of getting people safely across there.
No, and I think that, that number two condition in the McMahon letter may, may lend itself to, if that does become an issue, it allows for the improvement of that intersections. And maybe, like Zach said, we could do some, some cross striping across, pedestrian crossing or something there.
Brought it out, okay.
For that sidewalk there on Moore, there's all those pine trees, and I understand that the verge, the two, maybe a minimum of two foot, but would increase. So you're just gonna, I guess, you're just gonna work it in within those, the existing trees?
I think we're gonna have to, we may have to limb them up a little bit. We'll have to, again, I think those will have to be field adjustments, and that was part of the flexibility, I think, that, that we discussed.
And then there's that, there's a big, that stormwater inlet structure down at the corner there. It's like, I can go around that, obviously, on the upper side.
Exactly.
Yeah, I'll say when I, Daryl and I walk the site, when you drive by, it looks like a tighter squeeze than when you walk by. I think there's a little more room than it seems like, but you're right, there is some stuff that we're just gonna have, they, I should say, are gonna have to sort of navigate, so.
How about McMahon's letter, Vic? Are we all good with that?
Uh, yes.
You have any issues you can't comply with?
No, we're not crazy about the 209 fee, of course, $97,000, but it's in the code, so we're, we're willing to comply with that.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Deb.
No, go ahead, Vic.
I was gonna say, other than that, I think there will comply. A lot of it was just trying to, to clean up that shoulder pass-by signing and get it, this, this, obviously, the COVID thing, it was lost in translation between redline markups between McMahon and our office, but we will definitely comply with those items.
Okay. I don't really see anything else on here that's an issue. Does anybody have any questions or any other issues they want to talk about for Duckling? No?
No.
No.
Does anybody want to make a recommendation?
Actually, Vic, do you want to run through the waivers quickly or no?
I didn't know if you wanted to do that separately, but I'd be happy to.
Yeah, I think if nothing else, it's good to, ready to know.
Arrow letter?
Yeah, I can actually pull up the letter from the applicant.
Okay, yeah, the first is just running the plan concurrently preliminary and final, which Daryl has supported or Arrow has supported in their recommendation. It's just there's no real changes between preliminary and final. Essentially, all the work is done at the same stage, so it's just combining the process. Number 10, or the second waiver, is cuts and fills exceeding five feet. Obviously, we've got some six, seven-foot cuts where we're cutting in off Church Road, so we do need to exceed those amounts. All are fairly customary for this type of commercial operation, so I think, again, Daryl supports that, and a lot of it is having to do with the site distance that's required when looking left outside, out of our entrance, exiting the site. The third waiver is removing more than 20% of the trees on a wooded lot, and I think early on, we had brought in some pictures of the site, and I think everyone is kind of aware how overgrown and, and most of the trees are in really, really pretty rough shape to begin with, and we're actually going to be removing 13 trees. There's one tree that, that seems worth saving. It's a big sycamore tree, kind of in the middle of, between the parking and the building and church, and we're trying to save that. So we have that as one of the ones that we are saving, we designed around that, but we're removing 13 of the other scrub trees and we're adding 50 additional trees. So there's going to be a lot more healthy trees on here when we're done. And that's the third. The fourth is the sidewalk, and really, it's kind of a partial waiver because we are providing sidewalk on the west side, not, just not on the east side. So I think we've discussed that, and I think Arrow supports that as well. And the third one, I mean, the fifth one, has to do with the two-foot verge area between the sidewalk with the ability to reduce it from four to two or adjust accordingly as, as needed in the field. And then the last one is the, the material or the basin outlet structure, the ordinance requires RCP, which, under the new BMPs and everything, you can use RCP for some of these level spreaders, which are perforated pipes. So we're proposing that we use high-density polyethylene, and that's fairly standard for the industry as well. I don't know if anyone has any specific questions on those also?
I do not. Anyone else?
No.
You are here for a-
Recommendation for preliminary slash final would be wonderful.
Somebody like to make this?
I'll make the recommendation. For Duckling's Early Learning Center, preliminary final land development, granting applicant meets all of the review letter recommendations, and granted the waivers, of course, for the property on 105 Church Road.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much. Everyone have a good evening.
Good night.
You too.
Good night.
You guys gotta use the thumbs up. Thanks.
The recommendation was made by Peter and spoken by Todd. Is Worthington in the waiting room, Zach?
Yeah, so let me, let me check in on that. There's at least a handful of people calling in, so I'd like to, we'll let the, the people that I recognize in, and then we'll ask them if they're waiting on anybody else, I guess.
Okay. We'll give it a minute.
Luke, if I name off a couple of people in, that I have here for you, can you let me know if you're missing anybody? Looks like I have-
Yeah, I can let you know.
Okay, looks like I have Frank-
Yep.
Tavani, I got Mark Thompson maybe twice, one by phone and one by Zoom.
Okay.
I think I recognized his number from the last time. Let's see here.
And you probably have Jerry O'Connor.
Yeah, Jerry O'Connor. Yeah, I think that's-
That's it for us. That's it, Zach.
All right, excellent. Lou, I'll turn it over to you if that's okay with you, Deb.
That's fine, for me.
So let, let me just, for those of, I don't know if we have any people in the audience out there, but this is Uptown Worthington, Worthington Associates Holding LP, and it's an amended master plan, an amended final land development plan for phase four of the previously approved mixed-use redevelopment of a former Worthington Steel property. Go ahead, Lou.
Thanks, Deb, and good evening, planning commission members. This is, as Deb just stated and as the agenda very thoroughly and accurately lists, an amended land development plan for Uptown Worthington. The only project I've been involved with in my career that seems to get smaller with every amended plan, but specifically, we're dealing with two buildings here on this amended plan as opposed to the approved plan. One is the proposed theater, downsized considerably. It's now a 12-screen theater with 1,100 seats, and you may recall, those who were around, that the approved movie theater on the plan now was a 1,600-seat theater and 16 screens. The other building that's changing in this phase is we've converted a building which was previously approved for this property into a three-story medical office building totaling 82,500 square feet. And previously, we had contemplated a five-story building, not contemplated, but had approved a five-story building as we sit here tonight and speak. And the parking area, the proposed medical office building's being constructed, we're building R12, is currently approved, so that building is no longer contemplated as part of the Worthington development. What's happening here, and it's no secret, you know, the office yields about the same at the end of the day. The residential yield, that's not before the commission tonight, that'll probably be the same at the end of the day. It's the retail that gets smaller and gets more diminished because of, you know, where we are, the times we're in, and Amazon. So that essentially is it. It's a relatively harmless, a planned amendment from a land use perspective. We've gotten three review letters, I guess four letters. I have three of them in front of me. The one letter I don't have, Zach, is the landscape letter. I don't know what I did with it, but there was only a couple of comments on that. We have the Arrow letter of May 8th, which we're fine with what is contained in this letter as being a condition of our recommendation. We have a Pinoni letter dated May 18th, which deals with technical sewer things which need to be amended going forward before the plan is recorded, and there's nothing here that causes us any agita or concern. And we have a recently approved McMahon, or recently received McMahon letter dated August 14, 2020 regarding traffic and things that need to be looked at and improvements that may have to be installed as the project completes build-out, but certainly not now. And we knew all this back in the early days of Worthington planning. For those not familiar with the early days of Worthington, this project is what developers and municipalities would call "front-loaded" with traffic improvements. Much of what you see surrounding this site today was constructed in the very early days of Worthington. Many of the improvements, you know, and we were anticipating, obviously, a much larger plan at that time. The comments in McMahon's letter are relatively minor. We agree with them. We were fortunate in that we were able to, to do some traffic analysis because Frank Tavani, who's on this call, had recently done traffic analysis for the Waterwalk Hotel, which, as you know, has just been approved. So we got all those counts, we got all that traffic information before everybody stayed at home and made traffic counts relatively worthless from March, I guess, up until the present day. So we have good data. Chris has reviewed it. We've gone through the traffic report. So Deb, we can, you know, we can answer questions as you have them, but as I said, these are very clean review letters, and we'd be looking for a recommendation this evening.
Yep. It's the cleanest one I think I've ever seen for Worthington.
I was a little shocked myself, and I, I was wondering, why aren't we on the May agenda or the June agenda? And it was really the McMahon and the traffic analysis that was the lagger here, because we had to go back and dig up old plans and this, that, and the other, but fortunately, we're on the August agenda.
Okay. I don't know if anybody has any technical questions on this letter, but I, I'm curious about the timeline, Lou.
You have the timeline for construction?
Yes.
Yeah, we are too. The, and I don't mean to be glib about that. The theater, you know, you would think that the theater lease would have gone away with COVID, but it has not. You know, the theater is still interested, there's, and we're still interested in the theater. I would be, and Jerry can probably speak to this if he's on the call, but I would, I don't know when they will put a shovel in the ground. I mean, but I do know what our obligation is, and that is to get it approved. So we're encouraged that they're, they're hanging in there, you know, what this theater looks like or how it's- You know, what this theater looks like or how it's going to be constructed internally. I guess is a subject of much discussion throughout the theater industry these days. The medical office building put a hold on things immediately following COVID, as did almost everybody. But again, we're seeing renewed interest from them. And my guess would be, Jerry, without speaking out of school here, that the buildings you would see constructed first would be the MOB. Unless we see some grand resurgence in theater attendance or whatever, which I don't foresee in the in the at least till the end of this year and probably early next year.
Probably correct.
Okay.
Hi. I got for the McMahon. For, I guess, whomever, if you can, it's item number five. And just what can you speak to that? The August 14th McMahon letter, item number five.
Is that the here? Is that the Vanguard comment?
It's the roundabout.
I'll let I'll tee that up and then defer to Frank for technical background on that. The Worthington granted Vanguard an easement or Vanguard's predecessor, Wyeth, an easement to access the campus through there. And I think Frank and Chris and the township staff agree that getting accurate reads out of what we did not study that in conjunction with Waterwalk, that we have no accurate traffic reads. And right now, if you go out there, there's nobody going to the Vanguard campus. So it's tough to put a finger on what the problem is. We think the problem's operational. There appears to be enough road improvement. There appears to be enough asphalt. Vanguard has a control booth through which it regulates visitors to the campus, employees. And from what I've heard and Frank Frank has observed, and I think Chris is in agreement, that operational what Vanguard's doing operationally is going to have to be discussed with them going forward. We we agree, we're amenable to sitting down with them, talking about it and with the township, but it's futile to do that now. We, you know, we do believe that it's operational. You know, you figure you stop one car, somebody's asking for directions or how to get around the campus. If they ask at the wrong time, I guess that could muck things up pretty good. And Frank, you can elaborate on that. I think you've spoken with the
Is it also like end of the day factory whistle, everyone leaving at the same time, or everyone coming in at the same time type of thing?
I don't think it's an exit problem. I think it's an entry problem, Peter, but I'll let Frank speak to that. But you're correct. I think you're probably accurate. Although we we accounted for that in original reports, you know, so I don't think it flows so much. I do think it's operational. If you have one, two people stop and
I I agree with you. Having been to that site numerous times, I think they have one lane for their employees with a pass, and they just skirt through because they have the RFID access.
Yep.
So it's where people have to stop at the the guard shack, and they have to do research.
Yep, it's and that's Frank. I think you can elaborate. That's exactly what the guardhouse attendant told you.
Yes, that that is exactly right. In McMahon's original letter, which was from March 25th, this was comment six, and they do point out that feedback from the township police was that it was a morning issue when traffic is arriving, not an exiting issue. And I happened to be in the township about two weeks ago, and knowing that the guardhouse probably wasn't as busy as it had been prior to COVID, I decided to go around the roundabout and introduce myself to the guard on duty at the time. And although the gate arm was up, he was in the booth, he came out immediately to speak with me. And what he essentially said is the the guardhouse on the southern leg of the intersection of Brennan and Foundry is relatively close to the roundabout. And although it does flare out, and it's about one and a half, maybe two lanes wide, so people with the appropriate credentials could theoretically get around a car. Depending on where that car stops, the car being the confused motorist who's asking the security gate, you know, how to get around Vanguard's large campus could very quickly gum up the works. And anyone who's peeling off of 29 heading east on Brennan and then going into the roundabout and immediately coming off the roundabout is now, you know, behind this this motorist who's holding everything up. So that was what I suspected, and that was what the security guard on duty two weeks ago corroborated to me. And he also said that right now, there's probably 5% of Vanguard's staff at these buildings presently. So even just trying to, you know, get a meeting with them to validate this is going to be challenging presently. We believe that's probably the issue.
Yeah, Peter, and I think what's outlined in the letter here, what we've discussed with the applicant and their attorney is if in addition to the seven traffic conditions that were assigned to the previous approval, probably what we'd want to do is add an eighth that speaks to, like the other conditions, monitoring the situation here. As you know, Vanguard was approved for a new building a couple of years back. That's complete now. Essentially empty at this point, but they also had approval or conceptually shown a second phase for another 200-plus thousand-square-foot office. So that obviously would impact this roundabout in a different way, not knowing the exact form ultimately what Worthington will be. We just want to have an opportunity to reassess that later. If it's operational, great. If there are need for improvements later based on actual traffic counts and things like that, we can evaluate that at a time.
And if it's worth just to piggyback on that, my August 7th letter, I did make reference to the Panoni report that was prepared for that Vanguard expansion that was given to me by McMahon. And they actually do include in their conclusions the possibility of making some other operational, programmatic, whatever you want to call it, improvements to this roundabout when the time comes. So I think the township's already in a good place with them. And we could all hopefully work together to come up with, you know, a reasonable improvement to this.
Well, this is John Lommer. The obvious point, having heard your explanations, is that this will impact Vanguard employees. And so it's there, obviously, then it's in their interest to improve it. They don't want to see people queued up in line anxious to get to a meeting while somebody gets directions.
Yeah, John, we we see this, and I talked to Zach this afternoon about it. Fortunately, you got two avoiding property owners who get along well, who talk to each other, who do business together. And, you know, we have a mutual interest in making this work for a variety of different reasons. It's not a if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. You know, it doesn't work for us, doesn't work for them, doesn't work for the township, so.
Right, right. So this should be very easily solved with
I think so.
Yeah.
I I've got a quick question on the internal traffic flow. Doesn't seem to be major, but there seems to be, and I forget what letter. I have a an email copy from Jeff noting that the request for 25-foot drive aisles in all the proposed parking areas was comment 14 on, I guess, the May 22 McMahon letter. Maybe difficult for them to achieve, but what what is this position on that 25-foot aisles?
I can speak briefly to that. That 25-foot wide aisle requirement is actually a newer code requirement that was adopted after this plan was applied for and previously approved as for previous plans. So I'm not sure that actually applies. I did have to look back on that one. So what they show, I think they show some areas with 25 and some areas that do not comply with that. So I I don't know that that's something we can actually hold them to from an ordinance compliance standpoint. I think for the most part, if they could make it work, it'd be better, but I don't really anticipate any major issues from a parking lot standpoint, the drive aisle standpoint.
Yeah, I guess as long as the plan works, right? I'm sure that the engineers who designed this would probably feel pretty confident with their drive aisles. But it was just brought up in the McMahon letter, and I thought it was worthy of having a conversation.
Yeah, I think where they could do it, Jeff, they did it, you know, where we could where we could flare it out to 25 feet. It's and Mark Thompson's on the on the phone call, our civil engineer. I think we did what we could do. And then other areas, I guess there were existing improvements, which you know, we had to leave it if the prior approved and install, you know, driveway.
Yeah, that's it works for me. I I understand.
One of the things we didn't, it's not really called out as a point of emphasis any in the review letters now, but previous conversation with the applicant. The trail, this Chester Chester Valley Trail used to be shown routing through the site. The county has asked that it stay out along Matthews Road. And the applicant has does show that remaining out there and then providing some additional sidewalk connections to that. So they've essentially done what the county has asked them to, but they will also need to just kind of get their sign off on this prior to construction for some of the details with trail crossing at driveways, where the sidewalks tie in, all the sort of the nitty-gritty details with that. But they have sort of addressed some of those, you know, larger planning issues as well.
Zach, this is John. Could you characterize why you think that the county might have preferred to keep it tight to Matthews?
I think just because it's the well, two, maybe multiple part, but that's that's how it exists today. The the trail kind of runs along the fringe of this property and dips down into some existing what would be on-street parking along Matthews. They're proposing to remove that on-street parking now because I don't I still don't think it makes sense for the way this project has evolved. And just kind of reconstructing the trail through there. It also prevents, I think, fewer conflicts internal to the site. There's not as many areas where you could have people pulling in and out of places, not as many turning movements for the trailgoers to to avoid and be aware of. I think a lot of it has to do with just continuing a straight shot where people are currently riding their bikes.
Yeah, I see those and accept those points of view. I also think then turns the trail into a very noisy environment. If you ride a bike along there, you'll know immediately what I mean.
Yeah, it's a trade-off for sure. I do know what you mean. That can be between 202 and when there is traffic along Matthews, it can be kind of
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
How come this this review letter is dated May 8th?
That's what I said earlier, the the early reviews were fine of the engineering of the site. I mean, I was ready to come to you in May for a recommendation, but the traffic, the Vanguard analysis and some of the other things in the traffic report required us to to extend a little bit with McMahon. So that's what pushed us into August. We didn't have that one wrapped up until a couple of weeks ago.
Any other comments from anyone?
Yeah, hey, Lou, you you guys are okay with the Taylor Wiseman and Taylor?
Yes.
The conditions of prior approval with the traffic, that everything's good there?
Yeah, yeah, the traffic is unfolding just the way we we thought it would at Worthington. It's a little less because the site's smaller, but it's, you know, so far, still good.
Right. You you would think so because you're generate you will be generating less traffic.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Lou, is the medical building, do you know if it's meant to be a single user or multiple?
The original discussions were with a single user, and without getting too far into it, that will probably they are they have just advised, you know, that they're still interested. You know, the summer's coming and going. So Deb, to answer your question, and Jerry, if you're on this call and if I misspoke, but I do believe it was a single-user building.
It it now might be more than one user because they are going to probably downsize from their initial, what they initially wanted.
Okay.
But they're still going to probably take, you know, two of the three stories.
Okay. Sorry about that, Deb.
They just had a, you know, because of all those expenses they had to do for COVID, they're looking, they're looking at, you know, their finances, and they're going to have to reduce the size slightly, even though I think that they might expand by the time it's built.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Anybody else?
No, the really good news is it's moving forward.
We hope.
Is what about 10, 12 years?
Yeah. I think we're all I think we're all ready for Worthington to be to be built built out.
All right, and you're looking for a
A recommendation. Yeah, just a recommendation for plan approval.
Somebody want to make it?
I'll make the recommendation. I recommended the Board of Supervisors to accept the amended master plan of the LDO for 2020 Uptown Worthington. Amended amended master plan and amended final land development plan for phase four. The rest of the verbiage, if you want to put it up to to show the audience, you can, but I'm not going to read the whole thing. So that's what I'm recommending.
Do we have a second?
Second. Tim Kelly, second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, guys. Thank you very much.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right.
Good night.
Thank you.
Zach, are you ready to go right into the zoning applications? Are you?
Give these guys a second to hop off, and then I'll let the others in.
Thanks for not using the thumbs up thing. You're not using the thumbs up.
Oh.
I can't find it. I whatever.
It's under reactions at the bottom next to record.
Well, I'm on full screen, so oh, here we go. I got it.
That's all.
High reactions. There you go.
There's no thumbs down there. That's the problem.
See that? How do you get rid of the thumbs up? Does it go away in time?
It goes away.
All right.
See, it's gone already. Very good, Todd.
Oh, I see Ted down there. Hey, Ted. Oh, he's on mute. He's in the dark, too.
I think we have Tom Smith and Dan Butcher for this next application here.
Okay. Everybody is in and needs to be here?
Looks that way, yep.
All right. So this is a zoning hearing board application for 20 Old Lancaster Road. Dan and Holly Butcher. And it is, they are seeking a variance for relief from various requirements related to steep slope protection. They're proposing to subdivide the property into two lots for the purpose of constructing a new single-family dwelling on Lot 2. Lot 1 will contain 18,734 square foot. And Lot 2, wait, Lot 1 will contain 18,734 square feet. Lot 2 will contain 17,162 feet of land of the right-of-way of Old Lancaster Pike. Property is located again at 20 Old Lancaster Road, and it is within an R3 residence. With the Butchers.
Deb, I'm going to put just a couple of people on mute here just to make sure I'm not getting too much feedback. I just want to give everyone a heads up. I'm not going to name names, but I think I figured out who it was.
Yeah.
Are you guys ready?
Sure.
All right, then I want to jump into really. Good evening, everybody. I'm Dan Butcher. I'm the owner, along with Holly Butcher of 20 Old Lakes to Road. My engineer, Tom Smith, is on the line here with us as well tonight. As you mentioned, we have a zoning application to subdivide our building lot. We live on, we live on the lot right now. It's around just around 0.9 acres. So we're looking to subdivide that into two different lots. In the initial engineering, we had conformed with all the regulations for the township for zoning. And after further examination, it was we see that we have some steep slope issues that we need to deal with, so. So that's what we're seeking relief from, from the zoning board, and they're running it by the planning commission, I guess, after partially in our request, I guess, to get your input on that. I'll let town speak more to that from a technical standpoint, but that's my lay view of that. So why are we doing this? Or primarily doing it to help and offset some of our student loan debt from our children and actually my wife. And the general education expenses, I would like to leverage that and help us deal with some of that. Similar to the other lots on the street, which they're, they all are around point four or five acres, some are even less than that. Most of them have the steep slope as well, some of which are manmade, and I'll let Tom get into that when he reviews the plan. We've designed this for minimal impact to the, the lot itself. It's a modest house and footprint. They're using, recommending a shared driveway. Public sewer, public water and, or we intend to, and to get your approval to comply with all the stormwater management to deal with the runoff that we may create. But actually, the layout we're looking at in the lot itself is similar to a lot of our four that four doors down at fifty Old Lancaster Road, I believe, and I think Zach, Tom, they have sent me a picture of that today. So that's again, we plan to treat the main issue caused by the steep slope of the stormwater management per township regulations. I've actually discussed this with most of the neighbors already, the most impacted neighbors for sure. And they appreciate the effort to manage the stormwater that we're that we're addressing here. So at this point, I'm going to just turn over to Tom to kind of take it from here from a technical standpoint.
Thanks, Dan. I'm Tom Smith, President of Bersick and Smith Engineering in Royers Ford, Pennsylvania, and we prepared these plans for Dan and Holly Butcher. As, as Dan had mentioned, the property contains enough land to subdivide it into two parcels, meeting all of the zoning, building and setback requirements for construction. However, there isn't a place on the proposed lot that we can build a single family dwelling without disturbing steep slopes. Well, we went through several iterations of, of plans that involved different sized and shaped houses. We moved them back and forth on the lot. And this plan is, is a very modest dwelling. It contains a footprint of, I believe, thirteen hundred and sixty square feet for the building as opposed to the existing dwelling on, on Lot One of about twenty-two hundred square feet of footprint. One of the unique features with the plan is if you are looking at the plan, you'll see some very dark shaded areas near Old Lancaster Pike. They come up the right side. As we're looking at the plan, the right side of the existing driveway. And then we have some areas behind the house that are dark shaded. Those consist of very steep slopes or over twenty-five percent slopes. What is rather unique here is that it's my opinion that all of those slopes were manmade. It's obvious that the, that the steepness of the slopes along the road were when the road was built and our shoulders widened and slopes were created. There were slopes created along the driveway leading up to the house. And then due to cutting behind the house, there was a steep slope area created, very steep slope area that was created. The lightly shaded areas are steep slopes fifteen to twenty-five percent. And for the most part, those are probably the natural grade. I don't know if Zach has the color exhibits that I submitted today. There we go. As you see, all of those circled lots along the frontage of Old Lancaster Pike. That slope is the MAD Manor Loom fifteen to twenty-five percent slope. And you can see in that area, those are the very steep slopes by, by the by the soil survey. And every lot along that area there that's circled in blue has been developed and has affected or disturbed very steep slopes. At least by soil definition. One thing that I will call to your attention, if you can see parcel two three forty-nine, it's, it's almost an upside down version of what we're doing. That is number fifty Old Lancaster Pike. It's our belief that basically that, that lot was created out of a larger lot. And our lot, which is labeled site in Exhibit One, was really the only one that was not developed to, to comply with the R three zoning of seventeen thousand square feet. Exhibit two, if you just turn to that, you could see that shows the it shows the same thing, although the contours are turned on. And the contours there, you can see our lot actually from those contours contains flatter areas than some of those areas that are a lot farther to the east. So that, we were just trying to point that out, that really our situation is really no different than the other nine out of ten, ten homes. There's a list of variances that are being requested. Several of them, and I can go over those just quickly. Some of those may or may not be needed as we're going to see when we get to the zoning hearing board based on an interpretation they may have. The first one is two hundred dash fifty-seven C six, which basically says that we can't disturb, we can disturb steep slopes as long as we only have an existing dwelling and not have any new dwellings on the same property. That, to me, is very similar, if not the same thing, as two hundred fifty-seven D one, which prohibits structures other than those allowed in section C six E and F. So as an abundant, out of an abundance of caution, we're asking for relief if needed for C six as well as D one. The next one is two hundred fifty-seven D two, which prohibits cut and fill other than those in, in associated uses with the other subsections. We're saying that that's an if necessary request because really there's not any way to build a house without doing cut and fill. And this really isn't per se a cut and fill operation. It's really ancillary to the construction of the home. So if the zoning board feels that's necessary, we put it in the application. Same thing with section D four, removal of topsoil. This is not a topsoil removal project. There will be some topsoil that'll be removed to build the house and, and the parking area and so forth, but it's our intention to use as much of it as possible on the property. And again, this isn't really, it's just, it's not a topsoil removal project. The purpose is that some may be needed to be removed as a result of the construction. And then finally, section two hundred fifty-seven F three requires us to get a conditional use from the Board of Supervisors for stormwater management facilities in steep slope areas. That section of the code requires the same criteria for approval of of construction in steep slopes. It's just going to be heard by a different body, the Board of Supervisors. We're requesting a variance of that section showing that we can meet all those requirements and that the zoning hearing board would, would hear that instead of the Board of Supervisors. We've looked at the performance standards and we believe that we've met all of those criteria by keeping the areas of disturbance at us, at an absolute minimum. Making a very small house as small as possible. That would disturb the least amount of slopes. We've tried to maintain buffers without, without disturbing any of the very steep slopes along Old Lancaster Pike. And we've included numbers on the plan that indicate how many square feet of disturbance there would be of, of steep slopes and very steep slopes. For instance, for, for the recharge bed for stormwater, we aren't disturbing any very steep slopes. And our disturbance of that is, oh, is three hundred and three square feet, which is much less than the majority of that area needed to build the recharge bed. For the house, we disturbed approximately six hundred and fifty-three square feet of steep slope and two hundred and thirty-six square feet of very steep slope. And again, it's our opinion that really that, that area pretty much that sits under the house is, was manmade at the time of development of this property. And essentially that slope will be flattened because there will be a house sitting on it and the driveway will be flattened. So in our opinion, with the, the stormwater management that we'll be doing, erosion controls that we'll be observing during construction, we'll be able to minimize any kind of impacts. Looking at the plans and just a little more detail for the stormwater management that we have proposed, we'll be collecting all the roof water, roof drains off of the house and piping it directly into the recharge bed so there'll be no runoff from the structure that get, that goes down the driveway. The area of the driveway that's existing will basically remain unchanged. And the, the area for our driveway and garage underneath, that water will be collected as well and discharged into the recharge bed. So that's basically our situation at this point. I don't know how the planning commission typically handles this, but we would ask that the planning commission give us a favorable recommendation to the zoning hearing board if that's something you would do.
I just, I'll just tell you what my initial reaction is. This is Debbie Abel. I happen to think that there is a, a need for, for more affordable housing options. Single dwellings particularly. You know, there's a lot of complaints about townhouses and apartments being built in the white one. And I think it would be nice to have single family homes a little more affordable in some parts of this township somewhere. So I'm not against the plan. I do have concerns over the stormwater management. And I heard what you said about no discharge. I would like to get information about that, maybe Darrell or, or engineers enlighten me a little bit on how that's absolutely going to be one hundred percent feasible.
Can you mute yourself, please? Somebody just needs to turn the television off.
Yeah, really.
Thank you.
I would, I would like to add before, before you ask your engineer, this is our first, this is the first step in getting zoning approval. If we don't receive zoning approval, we can't subdivide and then we can't, we won't be doing anything. So if the next step, if you do get zoning approval would be to submit the subdivision and of course, then the township engineer and all the consultants would be reviewing our grading in stormwater to make sure it complies with your township code.
Tom, this is Darrell Becker, the Townships Engineer. You had mentioned that the, the new driveway and parking area will be directed to the infiltration bed?
Yes, we did. I don't believe this, this plan. We've updated the plan a little bit since then, and we've added a cat space and over in the turnaround area and, and, and collected that drainage. And that's unfortunately, that's not on this plan, but it's on the most recent plan, which we prepared revised July twenty-first.
Okay, and that would be at the corner of the retaining wall?
Yes.
Okay. I see that's where the, that's how the contours are laid out, so.
Yeah, it would be the northwest corner of that little turnaround, K turn.
Right, okay, thank you. And Deb, I'm sorry, you had a question for me?
I, I was just curious about how, the stormwater management. You know, obviously if they get the zoning and the stormwater, I'm just curious as to how, how that would be one hundred percent.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. The infiltration bed, as you see there, is, is generally on, on slopes less than the fifteen percent. Not shaded in any way. So that's not an issue. Downspouts from the dwelling will be collected and, and piped down to the bed. And as Tom just mentioned, this plan doesn't show it, but there will be an inlet placed in the McCattam driveway, a parking area that will collect that water and then pipe to the bed as well. So I mean, it, it sounds like it's going to work, obviously, until I would get a plan submitted and calculations reviewed. I can't say a hundred percent that it will work, but it appears that it will work, yes.
We would also perform infiltration testing at that location before we do our final design and, and make sure that we do, we are able to handle the stormwater by infiltration as well.
Sure. So yes, Deb, I, I think it can work. I just have to obviously review the calculations and to finish the revised final plan.
Sure.
Thank you, Darrell.
Sure. Can I ask what's the hardship that you're claiming for the variance?
Really, the, the, the zoning allows us to build, to subdivide this land. But there's no way to build on the lot that we would be able to create because of your steep slope controls. So we believe that's a hardship and of course, our attorney's going to argue that before the zoning board.
So basically, we should just get away, do away with our steep slopes and let people build wherever they want?
No, I wouldn't say that. You know, we have attempted to minimize the area of disturbance. Your ordinance is not sensitive to whether stope and slopes were manmade or created. I'm sorry, unnatural. And that really, from this standpoint, our disturbance is very minimal. And there are no special construction techniques that are really needed here. If, if someone could put the, if Zach could put that one picture up of the house on lot on fifty Old Lancaster that I sent today, if you have that, you could see it's certainly feasible. It'll be a basement garage, but it's certainly, the house would be tailored and fit into the, into the land with a walkout on the upper level, the second level there. Basically, our concept will be very similar to that basement garage and the grade in the back of and the grade in the back of the house would be up at the next level like this one is.
I got a comment or question. The I got a couple, I guess. The, if you want to put the other graphic up again of the overview plan, the engineered plan, the steep slope that the house is actually, the proposed home is actually sitting on.
Yes.
It is pretty obvious that all the other steep slopes were manmade. You can just tell by the way they curl around all the features.
Right.
How do you, what, the only logical reason I could see that that would be a manmade steep slope is that they actually had to get rid of fill.
That, that could be. Maybe Dan knows, but I don't believe he's been there as long as the house was. But yeah, they're very limited in terms of, of how many vertical feet there are. These are one foot contours also. So that area under the house goes from about 209 to 212. It's only three feet of very steep slopes in there. So it's very minimal.
It's a small spot on the grand scheme of the whole thing.
Absolutely.
But it is interesting.
Yeah.
But like I said, I'm more out of curiosity is how do you know that was a manmade spot? It's
the configuration you can see. Even behind the existing house there at the southeast corner.
I get that. I've already said that they're all obvious. The only one that's not obvious, unless it was just a place, say, oh, we got extra fill, get rid of it. It's once underneath the proposed dwelling.
Right.
See a logical reason why that is there.
I can't explain it.
Yeah, that's fine. And then the other, there was a statement in one of these letters and it's like, oh, here we go, page three.
Of the application?
Yeah, there's a statement. There will be no bulk and bulk cut and fill for this proposal.
Right.
Well, I can get the fill component, but you gotta have a pretty aggressive cut.
Well.
The back corner of that house in there.
What I'm really saying is we're not going to go in with trucks and bulldozers and take all the dirt out and fill it in. It's only really related to the house construction and the improvements that are shown as opposed to being a cut and fill project for the sake of cutting and filling only.
Okay. It's, I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to say you're trying to mislead it. It's kind of a misleading statement. Because it is a pretty big cut, but, and I do understand it's a small cut.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a small footprint.
They walkout type constructions done every day.
Yeah, 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 I know. But not necessarily in steep slopes, but what other? Bear with me here, I'm gathering my thoughts on some of these questions. Oh, I guess one of the concerns when you're getting back to the stormwater is if, if this is approved, your variance through the zoning hearing board, and then you come back and, and you do your testing and you find out that this is potentially a major sinkhole problem, especially for your groundwater recharge bed, your plan will have to change and I'm, would be concerned that there'd be more disturbance to put a more conventional or just a retention or detention base in it. This is like, kind of like a, putting a, which comes first, the cart or the horse? You know what I mean? The chicken or the egg scenario?
Well, you know, that, you're right. It is a chicken or the egg thing and we can't proceed without the zoning approval. So, you know, we realize we've got other hurdles to deal with. And I'm, and I've dealt with stormwater management all my career, so I'm pretty confident that we'll be able to get something in that that's going to comply with your code. I did do some rough calculations to lay out the size of the bed. You know, those, those numbers should work provided that there's any recharge or any infiltration capacity that would let the water go in less than 72 hours.
Okay.
If your point is more though, that if, if that specific location didn't get favorable percolation, that the basin would have to move and therefore disturb more steep slopes?
It, it may. And that's something, you know, we have some plus or minus numbers on there. We would hope that, you know, we would still cite whatever we're doing in that area. It really almost has to be an underground facility because to construct a basin, so to speak, would, would really make it infeasible because of you'd be chasing those slopes up and down the hill to try and construct it. So it really has to be an underground facility. We may have to find that we have to put larger pipes in instead of a rock bed or something different than that, but we'll have to deal with that during the subdivision approval. And it's not that after this zoning approval, we just go get a building permit and then everyone's stuck with it. We have to go through the subdivision process. We have to prove that it works before we get, get the subdivision approved.
I guess the last comment or close to the last one is, and I appreciate the sensitivity to the piece of land and everything, but many times throughout your presentation, your printed presentation, you state that the design was specifically tailored to account for the sloping areas, et cetera. But I'm really pointing towards, and I, and I know you probably found the best spot to put that home, like you said. It, it looks like it is and I don't question that. The size of the footprint in the future, you know, I go out 15, 20, 25 years from now, what's to memorialize that this footprint doesn't grow and and now granted, I guess they gotta come in front of the township again and they would have to ask for another variance, my guess is to put it in addition on because it's still steep slopes. I mean, maybe Daryl could expand on that. It's more of an educational question I'm looking for.
Yeah, you're correct. You're correct, Jeff. And then if there's any modifications to that structure that will affect steep slopes, they would have to come back and get a variance of that. And that's, you know, that's not uncommon for any property.
Right, so I
The decision would probably be written that it would have to come, have to be moved forward substantially consistent with what's shown on the plan or the exhibits that they're submitting to the zoning hearing board?
Yeah, I mean, it would make, make sense to me that that, something like that would be said. Because, you know, I'm not seeing a patio or a deck shown. And you, you can bet your bottom dollar, somebody buys this house and say, ah, and put a patio back here. I could just see it there. And so it's just got to be watched because of the sensitivity of the slopes. That's just my opinion from a long-term planning sense.
I think if there's something specific that, that the planning commission wants to recommend, like, you know, no further disturbance of steep slopes for the construction of other areas, that's something you could suggest? They could be considered by the, those could be relayed to the, to the board and or onto the zoning hearing board?
It, it doesn't even need to be a condition of approval. It goes without saying that the relief they're asking for is shown on the plan. If they go to build something not on the plan, they'd need more relief.
Right.
So it doesn't even have to be a condition of approval. It's all actually built in.
In the future that they, are you saying that you don't want people to be able to request further relief, Jeff, or just?
No, I'm not saying that. You know, 15 years out later, somebody wants to build a patio and they come before the zoning hearing board or planning commission first to look for, you know, whoever's on that commission will make judgment if they're going to say, I'm not saying I want to lock it down forever to be on its plan. I'm just, I'm just bringing up conversations that I just think are healthy viewpoints and conversations to make.
And I, I agree with that. And if you, you look at the area behind the house and obviously there's a building envelope there, building setbacks that are very close to that back corner. But you do see white areas behind this deep slope. So there is an area there that is not deep slope. So if that were to be the case, if somebody wanted to put a patio in, they might be able to convince whoever they would need to at the time that this is a very minor situation. Again, we would typically map an area like this with two-foot contours. And some of those areas might change quite a bit if they were only on a two-foot interval. We've mapped them every foot and you know, it's, it's very conservative the way we've mapped everything out.
Yeah, how could they change if it's a percent grade? It'll be a steep slope.
Most ordinances that I've found define the slopes a little bit differently. Like six vertical feet over or over three consecutive contours. So and, and most ordinances that I deal with also usually put a limit of disturbance in either in a percentage or a square footage. So that could kick out some of these areas being delineated the way they are. For instance, that back right corner of the house is only over two vertical feet. I wouldn't call that a slope of concern whatsoever. So, you know, it, and we haven't had the opportunity to get any comments from your engineer in terms of how they, how they would, you know, monitor this, we, or how they would interpret what the slopes are. Your ordinance isn't very specific in terms of, of how, how to delineate it and it doesn't allow for any disturbance of steep slopes at all for construction of a house. So your ordinance is very restrictive.
Have you given any consideration of stormwater from the existing dwelling? Kind of add into the, the seepage bed? So if you look at the impervious ground as an aggregate, as the existing and then?
No, we haven't. I mean, that would probably result in disturbance and might, more disturbance and it may also involve some conflicts with maybe utilities coming up the driveway that we're going to need to put in. Again, that, that area for that bed is, is, is feasible for what we're doing there. If we were putting a new driveway and a new house in more like what's there now, we would have much more disturbance and construction would be difficult. We're not aware of any issues. Dan, are you aware of any issues with stormwater from your existing house and driveway?
No, I'm not aware of any.
Well, how does everyone feel about this? The rest of the board?
I have a quick question. The this looks like the proposed dwelling is going to be awfully close to the new property line. Does that, Zach, does that meet the setbacks requirements?
Yeah, it does. It's sort of situated between the rear setback and the side yard, the new side yard setback. So it's kind of settled in there just right. You really couldn't shift it any further back or over to the side. So, but it does meet the minimum setback.
So, I mean, I know we've, we've had some amendments to the, to the ordinances recently trying to prevent, you know, detached structures or in-law suites on the same lot. And I'm just wondering, is this kind of an end around to get a, like a rental property right next door by, by partitioning this off and and getting around those, those requirements? It seems like that's really close. But that's just my, my thoughts here. With regard to the steep slope, I'm, I'm inclined to allow it. In this case, we look at them on a case-by-case basis and I think that this one is not a severe enough severe enough slope that, that we should just out of hand reject it. And I listened to the arguments and I'm persuaded. It's my thought.
John, I think your microphone's on mute. John, did you get my note? I think your microphone is on mute.
Oh dear. Yep. Is it working now?
Yep.
All right, yeah, I think I concur. And if it was an act of shoehorning a much larger building in there, I'd feel uncomfortable. But it just does look modest and that's good from an economics standpoint also.
I had a question in respect to the lot. It's like, it's a very wooded lot. It's a stormwater or at least of what are running down the hills. And the question is, how many trees do you think you have to remove to get this new structure in?
Yes, I can address that. There's, there's one tree that actually is dead that needs to come down. So that one's already gone. There's another one that likely is going to need some trimming back or potentially removed. So talking about two trees. There are a lot of woods back there. Everything back behind there is wooded. On both sides, actually, the side away from the house and the side behind the house. But there's really one tree that's still alive. It's going to need to be either trimmed back along the south east, the southwest corner there or taken down. So in my opinion, it's
it sounds good.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of this because I believe we're trying to jam five pounds in a three-pound bag, which we see frequently. And I'm very worried. It's been stated that, well, there's other houses that were built years ago that one in the same type of steep slope because they're there, that justifies this subdivision. And we all know that, that if under today's ordinance, a lot of these houses wouldn't be built. So I'm just not in favor of this subdivision.
Anyone else?
I you know, looking at this plan, I, I, I think that a majority of it's manmade, except for that maybe that one pile. When I say pile, that would make it sound like it was manmade, but under the house. So I'm, I'm not opposed to this. It's yeah, I mean, I, I don't think it's overly aggressive. What I would have loved to see on this, and I think it would make sense for future presentations, is an aerial showing the land from an overview. And I only say that because when Mr. Butcher was just talking, am I pronouncing that right? Butcher?
Yeah, Butcher, yeah.
Okay. Was saying there's like a couple, only a couple of trees in that footprint. It sounds to me like you're cutting grass over there?
Yeah, pretty much. There was actually a shed there we need to remove and that's really what you're seeing for the steep slope is where the shed was placed. So that was, that was why, that's why you're seeing it there is because there was a leveling done for the shed. That's what the steep slope.
Okay.
Yeah, Jeff, look at Google Earth. Look at this property on Google Earth.
What, was that what I'm looking at right now?
No. That's just an overview shot.
I can
That's from years ago. Because across the street was where, is where
I can see, I would need this to be bigger.
If I could, if I could speak to that, if you go to Google Earth or Big Maps, all you're going to see is tree canopy. This was the best thing we could find that shows that the pictures we're taking, the aerial This was the best thing we could find that shows that the pictures we're taking, the aerial was taking taken in the cold months when there were no leaves on to do it. But you could see that open area down in front of the house. You can blow that up if you have the ability to do so. But that we did try to use Google Earth and it's it's with the with a heavy tree canopy, you can't see anything.
Actually, this is not a bad shot. What's where?
That's that's Chesco views.
Yeah, it's not bad.
Right.
Some of the the trees have leaves on, but some of them seem like they don't. So this might, maybe they're evergreens that have foliage. But so this is not bad. But I'm just making an observation, and it makes sense to me that in future presentations like this, you'd give somebody an idea. I actually think it's in your favor from a presentation standpoint that you'd show that the area was mowed. It makes it look like it's otherwise, if it were incredibly steep, you'd be tipping your trap tractor over. So yeah, I mean, I'm I'm okay with it. It fits into the spirit of what's around. I do understand what Todd's saying. I I I'm definitely not discarding his statements. You know, the times are changing. If this was much steeper or more aggressive of an application, I would probably feel the same way as Todd. But I I think it it's fitting into this neighborhood, if you will.
Now, but Jeff, Jeff, I'll go back to what you said. They're putting a very small house in a limited footprint. Whoever moves in will not be able to do anything else. No other structures legally will be able to be put on that property.
Yeah, well.
And to expect that somebody moves into a house and there's no changes that occur is, in reality, it it's just not going to happen.
Well, look, I I I hear your thing.
I disagree with you, Todd, on that. I mean, you know, I think I mean, I live in a house for 20 years and I haven't made any exterior improvements to my house. Before that, I lived in a house for 11 years in Malvern Borough. I didn't do anything extra to the outside. I think that that happens all the time. I don't necessarily move in and decide to build on.
Plus, they'd be breaking the law anyhow if they did it without the township's approval.
Yeah, and they still have to go for the variance again, as Joe said.
Right.
Right. So I don't want to make a decision based on the assumption that they're going to break the rules.
For me, it's all about the stormwater management. I need that comfortable feeling. And Daryl said that it should work. That's how I look at it. I think that I think the the plan works with the the houses in that in that community, in that area, I think.
I got I got one more thing, and I'm just going to break off just because I studied the trap out of this. I really did study it. On your engineered plan, with your notes to the right, which are covered now by on my computer by everybody's picture, but I have the printed.
Okay.
Number seven, it's the entire lot. You have 35,000 something something gross to title line. Is this backwards the net and gross numbers? Because as you go down in your proposed lot areas, your gross is always bigger and the sum of the gross on both of the on number nine, lot number one and two.
You are correct. And that was that was caught and changed on the on the July 21 submission or revision that we did. The gross is 42,896 and net is 35,896.
Got it. And and I just figured that, but I because I'm sitting there looking at all the numbers and all your statements with the lots. And I'm like, wait a minute.
Right.
All right, all right, cool.
You're correct. The table at the bottom, the zoning table, that is correct.
Yeah.
I have one more question. This might be for Zach. Would this property be subject to a tiff thing?
I'd have to check the service area. I know some of these areas that were previously developed are not including included in the service area. It would be subject to our rec fee. It would still have to go through subdivision. They'd have to replace trees if they're taken down, depending on how many. So that a lot of those other things that we would normally look at are going to apply. But I'd have to check the traffic impact.
Just curious. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll look it up now, actually.
Any other input? Well, Zach's looking that up.
This, I think I agree with Todd. I think that this it feels to me like this thing is just being wedged in there. And like, you know, right up against the setback lines and and to me, it just feels like, I think I don't, you know, now we're cutting down these lots to, you know, smaller and smaller. And I understand it's R3, but it just feels to me like it's being jammed in there. And I and I understand we're looking at, you know, the housing ability, but almost to Dante's point, like, are we looking at a workaround for one sense of, you know, additional dwellings on a single property? So I agree that slopes are not that big of an issue.
Code in all requirements and we're 30 feet from the rear yard. The western property line, the house will be about 23 feet away and from that angle. So it's not, I would, I would say we're not wedging it in there. We certainly have a little bit of room. But we're sensitive to the size of the dwelling and also minimize steep slopes. Put it in with with respect to honoring the contours.
Well, is everyone prepared to vote on this?
Yes.
One by one?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I have one more state question?
Go ahead.
We're looking at, what I'm going to say is, I mean, it's a subdivision plan. Are we actually, we're not really this isn't etched in stone, this plan is, we're voting on, and this is like kind of a legal-ish question, whether we believe this property close to the way it's presented. And I guess I'm going to call it a sketch plan at this point, but is is it okay to subdivide and build close to the way we're seeing? This plan exactly that we're voting on?
No, we're not. We're voting on the use, right, the variance?
Right. So therefore, this, if if I were to vote favorably or if it were favorable, you know, and we're not the NSA, it's the zoning hearing board.
Correct.
I see that the back corner is touching the building setback line, but the building setback line there is 30 feet. So it's it's like, okay, it might be sensible in a lot of applications and at land development to touch a corner on the back rear yard when it's 30 feet. The 15-foot side yard, you could say, oh, you're really pushing it. You're right on the edge because you literally are on the line there. I see it. That would be easily resolved if the subdivision line was moved a hair closer to where you got the two points to the to the existing dwelling. And because that dwelling would have no problem fall still falling within the setback lines of the dwelling footprint. So so the the point is that's resolvable, that that line later, if the line were to be adjusted away.
The reasoning for doing that is because we're creating the interior lot line. So we're affecting a neighboring property by where the house will be placed. We're affecting ourselves.
That's exactly right. What my point is, if if some people don't like the way they think I'll quote it, the shoehorned in, the shoehorn statement could be alleviated to a bit if that lot line were moved. Because the existing dwelling lot is much larger than the proposed new lot.
Right. You're right.
I think what they have to balance is meeting the minimum lot area. So they have to
Yeah.
they have to give enough to the new lot in the back there to make the to balance the numbers.
I don't know what you're talking about there. I think they got a lot of wiggle.
We do. The 19.49 foot dimension could easily be changed, although it would allow a little less land for their existing driveway and turnaround area. That's all.
Well, you're dealing with like a an easement situation anyhow, a shared easement for the driveway.
You're right.
So that becomes somewhat irrelevant. Is that not right? I mean, because its existing driveway is already into the proposed new lot.
Right.
So that 19.49 could be extended towards, and it looks like it's pretty close to parallel to the to the existing dwelling. Could be pushed five feet to that dwelling and you'd have whatever. I just it's just an observation again. The point is, if if the shoehorn thing is hanging people up, it's not necessarily, and is that what, we're not really voting on that. We're voting, is this an exceptional?
Yes. Shoehorning is not an ordinance, by the way.
What's that?
There is no ordinance on shoehorning.
I'm not.
I'm making light of it, but you're right. This is just for zoning review.
That's all it's about, that we can disturb steep slopes and we can build a house, which we'd be prohibited from doing under your code.
Right.
I think we're we're having a land development discussion for a zoning issue.
You're right.
You're right, but you're but you're going to get negative opinions based on that thought pattern.
If the if the plan was much more of a sketch and less detailed, we wouldn't probably be down this in this bramble. But I'm in favor of letting it move forward to the zoning hearing board and then take it as it comes.
I disagree with you, John. If the plan was a sketch on the back of a napkin, I would have the same feelings.
Okay, I stand corrected. That's just my impression. But I do support it moving forward to the zoning review.
Let's let's just go through this one by one. So John's.
Hey, Deb.
Yes.
Now I'm going to jump on. I just had two quick comments. One is related to the zoning hearing board application itself. Tom, you may just want to look at the code, what it says about sanitary sewer connections. Looks like you're showing that you're proposing to run a lateral there through some of the steep slopes. I don't imagine if the rest of this is viewed favorably, that'll be an issue. But you may you may just want to amend or append that to the application.
I'll check that out.
Yeah, I'd have to look at it again, too. I just wanted to make sure I threw it out there. And and this is more just a throwaway comment if if that's how it's viewed. It's really more about the orientation of the new building. It seems a little off kilter. I understand you're trying to minimize in the disturbance and meet the setbacks. But it seems to me the house could be oriented towards the street a little bit better. So it's just something to consider moving forward since it may have an impact on your application.
It would have a much more impact by trying to turn it parallel to the to the sideline. It would have much bigger impact on the steep slopes, which we didn't want to do.
Right, yeah, without amending the actual lot line, it would be more of an impact. So
Yeah.
just throwing that out there more from a
Understand.
Thanks, Zach.
All right.
All right. So, John, you are a yes.
Correct.
And let's see who's next. Tim?
I I let's see, I guess the way it's presented, I disagree. I think that Jeff had some really good points where it could be put out so or changed. And maybe that's the perception I'm looking at. So I guess the question is, you know, is it an acceptable use of land? I think it's, yes, it's an acceptable use of land. I don't agree with this plan the way it's presented, but that's the zoning zoning board.
Okay, so you're a yes on a use on this issue.
Yeah.
Peter? Peter's a thumbs up. Take that as a yes. And Dante?
I'm a yes.
Todd, you're a no?
Correct, I'm no.
So does somebody want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion. I just got awards. Or is it a statement? I make the motion, the the planning commission supports the relief.
You mean the zoning?
To the zoning hearing board that that we recommend or we support the relief. We see no reason to unaccept it. I don't know how to do this one, Zach, so you might want to help because this is out of the normal one. We don't do the zoning hearing.
That we that the zoning hearing board grant the relief, the variance relief.
Actually, your only your only role in this is not to recommend approval or denial of the underlying application. Because short of having a hearing and developing a record, you're not hearing enough evidence to make that determination. So your only role in this is determine whether you recommend to the board of supervisors that they send a solicitor in support or in opposition or just stay neutral.
Okay.
That's that's the only that's the only thing the planning commission does. You don't you don't rule on the application or recommend approval or denial. But you only recommend whether the board of supervisors should send a solicitor to oppose, support, or stay neutral.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that, Joe. Jeff, you want to do it again?
Okay, I recommended the planning commission send its solicitor in support of whatever you just said.
Yeah, I don't think you need, I don't think you need to send, I don't think you need to send me in support because we we really pick and choose when the township comes out in support or even opposition of an application. I think if you, what I would recommend is you just do a neutral, you do a motion that you recommend the board of supervisors, they stay neutral on the application.
Okay, that's what I recommend. Whatever, what he said, and I say that, it's I recommended the board of supervisors to remain neutral on the application.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Dante is a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay. I oppose the recommendation or oppose the
The recommendation? Okay.
Right.
All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
All right, who's going to talk about the ordinance amendment? Zach, Joe?
I can take it. So we've been, you've seen at least this first, well, you've seen both kind of. Medical office revision, we had a few months back, we had made some, we added some definitions and made sort of some alterations to how we address medical office type uses. The word I kept using back then was a spectrum. You know, we we had a, we defined what a doctor's office was. We defined what a hospital was. But we really didn't talk about anything in the middle. And there's a lot of new medical uses that weren't really considered in the ordinance as graphics. We added some medical clinic, medical office, ambulatory surgeon, or I'm sorry, urgent care facility, just to kind of acknowledge that these things are permitted in the township. In terms of the sort of like the ambulatory surgical center or medical clinic type uses, basically what it says is that you can perform minor surgeries. The original ordinance had said that you could, it could allow only up to a 24-hour stay. And a lot of that was trying to make sure we were more or less lined up with the Department of Health criteria for these different types of medical uses. Heard in the meantime is that there really are other types of facilities that do tend to, and we don't tend to have them here in in Pennsylvania, and apparently they're more common in places like Canada. There's a company that does hernia surgeries. And it's sort of a luxury facility where they do the surgery onsite and then allow you to recover up to a three day stay, sort of a, you know, a glorified rehab where you're you're all onsite, but you're taken care of. There's medical personnel nearby, but it's really like more of a glorified hotel or bed and breakfast kind of setup. So basically, what this first ordinance would do is just extend, modify the existing definition to extend the amount of time when we could stay at one of these facilities for rehab and monitoring directly associated with the procedure. So not trying to get into the full, this is a hospital type use, but something again, somewhere in between. So I don't know if anybody has any specific questions on that or if I did have.
This is John. That seems sensible, entirely sensible, although you know, is there a real risk that this is going to pop up and start happening here now? Is this a thing?
I don't think it's a risk. I think actually we came to our attention because it was somebody who wanted to come in and do that very use. And we realized that we had basically precluded them from doing it just by referencing a specific time period. It seems like a pretty harmless use. It actually seems like a really new and interesting use. It'd be one of the first here in Pennsylvania that sort of falls under this special category at the state level. I mean, it's separate from this, but the company is actually looking to occupy the veterinary services building there on Lancaster Avenue, the big glass front building. So I mean, it the reason I say that is because we have spaces that are that are logical for these types of uses, some that are underutilized, some that are maybe currently under development. You know, just trying to make sure that we allow for these different uses, I think is important.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you. Yeah, good.
Yeah, I'm one hundred percent fine with this.
Yeah, do that.
I agree with Debbie. I'm one hundred percent too.
Yeah, I I I agree.
I agree.
Dante?
I don't have any opposition to this.
I found the the company that that came to us about establishing their medical suites there was very interesting because he said that it's it's the doctor that that invented this procedure for hernia operations?
Yeah, the specific, the company is.
Surgery is named after him?
Yep, the guy's name is, the last name is Scholdice. It's a Canadian company. I guess he writes for the procedure and he's got this, they've got a number of facilities where they they sort of run this model in it. It does seem really cool. I mean, again, I think it's something that just kind of made it clear that our current ordinance didn't really do exactly what we were trying to get it to do. So it's not necessarily for them specifically, but they're they will certainly be the first to take advantage of it.
Yeah, I don't see any drawbacks. I mean, it could be one of these healthcare for the rich things too, but so what, you know?
It does seem to be a luxury thing. I mean, I just to not to belabor this, but our big concern really was not opening up the door to maybe having, you know, we didn't want to mess with our definition of hospital too much. We don't, not that I expect there to be a new paleo hospital a couple miles down the road, but a truly hospital could have a different impact from a traffic standpoint, from a noise and all that standpoint. So we also didn't want to blur the lines for things like rehab facilities. So we really, you know, as simple as this seems, we just wanted to make sure we were threading the needle and not opening the door.
Completely acceptable, so let's vote on it.
Is is there any conflict with this and having like an eating facility? Because if they're going to be there seventy two hours, the patients will have to be provided food. Right? So would there is there a conflict with having like, for lack of better terms, catering facilities onsite with a clinic?
I don't think so. I mean, a lot of that, if there's any requirements for that, it'd probably be through the Department of Health to go through their licensing. But I would say from from our perspective, just a simple answer is we allow hotels, we allow restaurants, we allow cater, we allow all the things that this kind of maybe mimics a little bit in some ways. So I don't foresee it being a major issue, but they'll have to sort out their licensing type issues at the state.
We just don't allow medical procedures at those catering facilities.
Right. That's a good point. And for good reason.
Right, so I'm 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 in agreement with it. I'm just asking if there's any sort of conflict with it.
I don't anticipate one.
Okay.
So these are really just for to get in front of you before we send them for review by the county. We just want to make sure that you guys are okay with it before we initiate the the actual formal process.
Are you ready to take some input about the accessory uses?
Let's do it. So I'm not going to go through this one line by line. What I can do is, if you want, just give you an update from what what has changed since the last time you guys looked at this.
I have a question.
Sure.
Did Deborah help fashion a section?
About chickens? She did not. But Ted Ted and Brittany worked on this with Bernadette from Joe's office. She's kind of, we had, you know, a lot of places don't bother dealing with this until they get questions and requests, and we were one of those places, but I think we've started to get more interest from people. I'm sure there's plenty of people doing it anyway, but we just wanted to acknowledge that if you're going to do it, there's certain sort of parameters that should be in place.
Well, yeah, the chickens thing, I know something about because I've had firsthand interaction with neighbors who have them. Roosters are a really big problem. There are other non-chicken fowl that are completely benign and lovely, like, you know, and some that are not. So you know, you're going to have people say, why can't I have guinea fowl? Why can't I have Cornish game hens? You know, the I think you're getting into the weeds there with that, but crowing roosters are a big problem. The biggest problem of all is rats, because rats go where the people feed their chickens, and that's a serious thing. If they leave the grain laying about and even the feces, it becomes a real public health problem. So you need some kind of emphasis of the clean cleanliness standards.
Since I have chickens, I can tell you, John is absolutely right. If you don't keep that chicken feed locked down tight, you're going to have rodents.
Lots of them. And, you know, it's parallel. I'm a little bit worried, but not too much. You can probably assuage me immediately back, but if someone puts in a garden and a rabbit wire fence around it to raise some carrots or whatever they want to grow, this is not viewed as an accessory use in your yard, is it? Is it?
No, well, let's see. We really just are regulating structures like that. So if you had a shed, we would probably call it. Depending on the size, it would have to meet a certain setback, but I don't think like a raised a raised garden or, you know, like you said, a a wire fence around a garden would would qualify.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that doesn't become a trip in the future. Okay, otherwise I like it.
I don't know. We we just started doing chickens. And I did let them free range because they really like to eat lanternflies.
Oh. That's good enough.
Under this ordinance, I would have to have it fenced in.
Yes.
Permitted if they stay within your property line.
I actually have a question. I mean, do we even need to be talking about, you know, chicken structures? Because isn't there an ordinance, a chicken ordinance anyway? Does that even pertain to this discussion?
I think what we're calling out here is that the structure itself would have to be a little further than a shed just because of what goes on inside of it, I guess. But yeah, we do say, it doesn't say that you have to have a structure. It just says that if you're going to have a structure like a pan or a coop, it's got to be a certain distance because it, you know, it's a little different than having a shovel.
Well, the the real reason to have good fencing and a structure is so the foxes don't eat your chickens. If you if you skip that step, you're going to lose your chickens. So.
Yeah, the emphasis here is more on minimizing impacts to neighbors, for sure. You're right. That is, it makes sense to have a fence for a number of reasons.
Right, I'm just saying, if somebody's trying to do this on the cheap, they're going to regret it ultimately either because of an upset neighbor or a fox. So I'm not sure how to regulate that.
The fox and the hawk will regulate it. Don't worry.
But you don't want your chickens wandering in the neighbor's yard if they're not cool with that.
Yeah, we're on the road. I'm sure they get pretty nosey, just like the rest of us. So
You know, ours stayed within probably thirty feet of the coop at all times, but still, we lost five last week, I think, to a hog. So
Wow.
So they're not allowed out unless they're supervised now.
Interesting.
Dante, you broke the hawk feeding ordinance.
I mean, yeah.
Don't feed the hawks.
I don't want to go off, but we had something trying to dig under the coop. So I I set the animal trap and I came out the next day. And there was a skunk in the trap.
That must have been fun getting it out.
Well, you know, I I let the chickens out, I fed them, and then I had a talk with the skunk. I named him Herman. I I told Herman, I said, I said, Herman, are we going to be cool? And he wasn't acting aggressive or anything. So I said, I'm going to let you out, but you can't come back. And you can't spray me. So I went over the cage, I opened it up and Herman was cool and he ran off into the woods and he hasn't been back. So.
That's a good story. I like that. Good.
Is that a children's book? It sounds like a children's.
It should be.
Yeah.
Off of the raccoons, Dante.
Oh, the raccoons. Yeah, they'll probably.
They will pull the legs right off your chicken.
Yeah, that's the thing. The raccoons are vicious. They won't just like go in and steal an egg. They'll slaughter the whole the whole lot just because they're nasty.
Yeah, raccoons and fox, you're right, and hogs.
All right, so on this ordinance, we're all okay with this, right? Is there any?
I have a question or comment or I need clarity. So Zach, under A three deck or platforms?
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. I was going to ask the same question.
Oh, good. So one, I to me, sixteen feet seems a little restrictive, right? Because then you're going to have to go ask for a variance, right? If I wanted an eighteen foot deck coming off on the same level, walking out of my sliding doors, I would need a variance.
You would need a variance if your back door was right on your, where it was two feet or so off your rear yard setback line.
Okay, so it to me, it's it I read that as if it were two parts. Hey, your your deck can't be any more than sixteen feet, period. And then it provided, but it it can be up to sixteen feet, but it can't be it can't take up any more than forty percent of your backyard yard depth, required yard depth, which I've never seen such verbiage ever written in the ordinance. I understand there's a backyard setback off the principal dwelling. And so therefore you just do the math, take the setback minus where your building is, and then take forty percent of it, right? But that it's it's unclear. It needs to be clarified better.
I think so. I see dead unmuted.
You want me to, yeah, you want me to take that? I'll take that one. So if you're in a community where you have a twenty foot rear yard setback, then obviously sixteen feet into that is is a pretty big chunk. And to your your first point, yes, if you're building right on the on the building setback line in the rear yard, then sixteen feet would be the max you could come out. If you have additional five feet of building envelope left, then you could have a twenty one foot deck.
I want to jump on.
Then I'm I'm losing the forty forty percent. So if I had a sixteen, now let me just get the, if I had sixteen feet from the back of my house, then I could take sixteen times point four and that's as big as my deck can be?
You can go forty percent into the required yard. So if you had a twenty foot rear yard, forty percent of that would be four feet.
Okay, just wait.
Into some of these smaller communities with small yards, then obviously, you know, you're going to need a variance to do anything bigger, but.
I cannot, I I mean, so basically you're saying you can build a deck in your backyard, just can't encroach into your your rear yard setback.
Well, the way we're seeing this, then it can a little bit.
Forty percent into it or sixteen feet. Whichever is greater.
But whatever is greater.
Well, not whatever is greater.
Because the way it's reading is it's an accessory use, deck or plat, not higher than the first floor of the building, may extend in the rear yard a distance of not greater than sixteen feet. If I put a period on that, it would be, you'd never have a deck greater than sixteen feet. It gets confusing that you put comma, provided that such extensions are not greater than forty percent of the required yard depth. I think it could be worded better.
So it's basically saying if you have a small, small yard, you have a lower setback, obviously you're not going to go bigger than sixteen feet, period.
So I think the way we may want to rephrase it to say just one quick point is that may not extend into the required rear yard setback, not the rear yard. Obviously, people think of the rear yard as just anything behind their house. What we're saying specifically is that you can't extend into what would be your setback, the area that you're not allowed to have anything in. So we're saying you can go into that a certain distance, up to sixteen feet at the most, unless you have a smaller setback, in which case you can only do forty percent of it. So let's say your setback, just for easy math, is a hundred feet. Well, no, I can't do that. I'm sorry.
That's a that's a big deck.
Yeah, that's it. Well, that's, yeah, the math would hurt the other way.
I've had some seen.
My point, we need we need to we need to word it better.
I think it's more.
Constantly asking for clarity.
I've had this language in a other municipality that I've worked, and it's, to me, it's pretty clear.
Yeah, it reads pretty clear to me, too.
Some of these senior communities where you only have a twenty foot rear yard, obviously you don't want them coming to within four feet of the property line. So they can have eight feet into a twenty foot rear yard, they still have twelve foot setback.
The setback is etched in stone. Is that not correct?
It is.
So
By by district, of course.
So let me just make sure I understand this. I can build a deck as far as I as I want, unless it's impervious. We got other issues. I get that, right? That's which is, but long as I don't encroach into the rear yard setback or the side yard for that matter, any building footprint setback.
Well, decks typically are on the rear of a house, which is why this is written the way it is. So I mean, if you have obviously a large enough yard, you can pretty much build a deck, whatever size you want. But you get to these small lots, and that's where you run into the issue of people wanting decks, but they're right against their building envelope, and they have a small rear yard. And to allow them anything without going to zoning hearing board. If you're familiar with how many cases go to zoning hearing board for for minor items that generally are approved, there's there's a huge time and cost factor, especially to the township on all this. So to eliminate some of those applications, we're giving some leeway to the smaller rear yard lots.
Okay, I'm just giving you my point. I, you know, Tim had something to say, but maybe he got answered.
No, I agree, but I guess I also have a question about the second part of that. Where the only retractable awning is allowed to be, so I can't have like a closed screen porch?
If it's in the building envelope, you can. If it's out beyond the building envelope, you can, unless you get a variance.
And normally, anything wouldn't be required allowed in the setback within the setback. We're saying in this case, really only a deck can you extend in there because there isn't a roof, there isn't sides on it. It's generally a fairly harmless use. So there's other things that normally would, we'd be talking about with setbacks, would just have to follow the normal you, the rules, and oh, which are outlined just below. would just have to follow the normal you, the rules, and oh, which are outlined just below this, so.
Is there anywhere in the ordinance that, the, the term yard depth is defined?
Yard?
Or depth.
Yard depth. I'm not sure about yard, I think when you look up yard, it refers you to the setbacks, like it, it kicks you a couple of times around through different definitions, but.
Right.
So specifically yard depth?
Well, the, the term required yard depth would have to be, you'd have to turn a bunch of pages in the ordinance to find out what that means. By looking at rear yard setback, building envelope, so.
I think depth should probably be, we're, again, as Ted said, this was more or less pulled from another ordinance. We may have to just adjust it to say things like required yards setback, to clarify a little bit.
Yeah, required rear yard setback.
Alright, well, that's good. I mean, I, I just found it confusing to me, but maybe I'm just getting dyslexic, that's all.
The, the good thing is, you don't have to be the guy who's interpreting it when people are calling in, that's.
Uh, I, believe me, I, I can imagine it's.
Those, those are good comments, so I mean, I think those are definitely good catches that we need to, that and the rats, at least. Do you guys have any other, like, specific comments?
I'm actually a little lost on the retractable awning anchored exclusively to the building or an overhead deck may cover such projections, but such projections may not be enclosed in any way. I'm, yeah, I'm kinda back to your original question, Jeff. I'm not understanding that Ted, you said that you couldn't, as long as it didn't protrude over the deck.
Over the setback line, once you cross the rear yard setback line, then you lose the ability to put a roof over it by right or close it. So you can put an awning on the house that would roll out to the depth of your deck, I guess, if you wanted one that big and it would come back in.
Basically saying you can have open air structures within the setback, but normally if you have a roof or something like that, you gotta meet your normal setbacks.
So if, so if I'm in R three, right, and my setback is twenty-five feet and my building, my building is right on that line, then I can go forty percent of that, that dimension in, I can go, I could take forty percent of that dimension for a deck?
You could go ten, ten feet.
And because I'm, and so in that, this is only, I guess, to Jeff's point, I, I don't know where it's clear that I'm operating in a setback, so in that, in this verbiage, like, or the required yard depth, but so I can go ten feet, and because I'm operate, because I'm building in a setback line, that's where the, that's where the, the structure, the roof structure is eliminated.
Right. Without this, you wouldn't be able to build a deck at all if you were at your setback line.
What, I did, yeah, isn't that being kinda lenient, like, like, for instance, like those houses over there on Route thirty, those, uh, across from Rita's? Like it, that were kinda jammed in there, like, are those, like, I never thought we could build into a setback on any part of the structure, like deck or house.
Well, in, in townhouses, you run into those unique situations, depending on whether you're buying just a footprint or you're buying a lot. Some of them do have a yard beyond the back of the house. Others do not, and of course, everybody wants a deck these days, so I've always said all along that the developer needs to determine what he wants to do before the plan gets recorded so that we can figure out whether they get a deck. I wasn't here for Linden Hall, so obviously that is very tight community there.
Well, like, I'm also thinking about a subdivision over in Thornberry, Delaware County, where Toll Brothers built this and they built it right, they built the homes right on top of the setback line and those residents are not allowed to have a deck. I mean, and that's obviously a different township, I'm just thinking that, uh, but they have open doors, they're just basically fenced off doors in their, you know, in their, uh, first floor elevation. So, I guess I'm, I'm kind of a, I'm surprised that we would let anybody build into a setback.
Well.
Like, so my understanding of a setback is if, like, all, there should be twenty-five feet clear from the right of way to the, any structure of the house.
But then you're allowed to have sheds and pools and things of that nature. Not everybody wants those necessarily, but a lot of people want a deck.
The most common ordinance that I see out there permits a ten-foot encroachment into the rear yard setback. That's what I see more often than not.
I'm having computer issues, guys, I'm gonna have to bail. It's, it's going crazy here. Sorry.
Not to make this a, a personal issue, but I'm just trying to apply this to my, my backyard. My backyard has a hundred year floodplain going through it. And my corner of my house is on building the building line. But I have two and a half acres. So how would that affect me if I wanted to build a deck?
Well, you have floodplain issues besides the setback issue, so I guess depending on elevation, if your first floor elevation is eight feet off the ground and the floodplain is really at the foot, footprint of the house, you're more than a foot and a half above the hundred year flood elevation, you'd probably be likely to build a deck then, and the only thing that would be in it would be a poster to.
So my house is kinda built into the side of a hill, a walkout basement and all, so my first floor is actually probably, I don't know, fifteen feet above the ground.
Yeah, you would, you would likely be, you would have, be able to have a, so this wouldn't impact it, but you could have a deck as long as, I would think, as long as it's elevated above the flood elevation.
I'm just trying to, trying to think of it in terms of the, of the building envelope. I have a deck on my house. I'm just saying, if we, if we wanted to extend it, or, you know, how, how does that affect?
I would think this would only benefit you. Right now, it says, like, if you, let's just say you've got twenty feet of space before you get into your setback, you could build it out twenty feet. But if you're right up on your setback line, this is allowing you to do something you wouldn't normally be allowed to under the current ordinance. I would think would only benefit you in that sense, if you were looking to do.
Right.
We're trying to, uh, create some flexibility. The, 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 the whole intent of this, this ordinance amendment is to try to eliminate some of the problems we see on a, you know, fairly frequent or periodic basis. But then also allow some flexibility for things that we don't think are really that egregious, like sheds being a little bit closer to the property line. Or, you know, minimize setback for smaller buildings or things like that.
So right now, right now, if somebody wants to put a deck on the back of their house, what's the rule?
Can't go into the setback?
Can't go into the setback.
Alright, so this is really, you gotta put this whole thing in context, as I'm thinking about this, this, we're under the accessory use category now. Correct me if I'm wrong, because, so we're talking specifically what falls under accessory. So if you have a deck, like Debbie's case, I don't think her deck is necessarily an accessory use because she's not, it's not falling under any encroachment whatsoever to her rear yard setback. Right? It's part of the dwelling.
It can be attached.
Yeah, it's attached.
There are decks that are attached, there are decks that are not. But if it's attached, it's part of the principal structure, has to meet setbacks, for sure.
Right, right, has to meet, but she's got a hundred feet before she even comes close to that setback. So she can have a, she could extend that deck probably another thirty feet if she wanted.
No, that's not true, because the way the house sits, the very corner of the house is on the, I mean, is on the the building envelope because of the floodplain. Does that make a difference?
But I don't, you know, can't get mixed up between the building envelope and the rear yard setback. So what's left, what I would say is the required yard depth.
Okay.
That, that's what I'm saying, that required yard depth as far as would be the difference between the building envelope or that the building envelope, well, is that right, the building envelope and the, and the rear yard setback?
Now, the building envelope and the, and the setback's the same thing.
That's.
Is all the area inbound of your setbacks that you.
So then a deck is always, always considered, a hundred percent always considered an accessory use?
Yes.
Yes.
Cause it's. Alright, so then like give it back to, I, you know what, I, I'm getting kinda sick of the subject, but the, on this, what, what threw me off right away is the sixteen foot, the statement, you can't have a deck anything greater than sixteen feet. Right? And it, it just was like, oh, shoot, I think mine's eighteen feet. I'm, I'll become existing non-conforming. Uh, now, I, I do believe my building, my rear yard building setback is within that I'm, I'm conforming there. But I'm greater than sixteen feet.
You can, the deck can be bigger than that. We're saying you can't protrude into the setback.
I, I just think that there could be some room for improvement in the way this is worded, like, what's the intent of this?
So Zach, that, that house, that property that we were looking at, Old Lancaster Pike today, the corner of that building is on the setback line in the rear yard. And there's a thirty foot setback, so we're saying that that guy can build twelve feet out into that, that setback?
That would be what, by that, by that section only, yes. Now, if he's disturbing steep slope, then that's another issue.
Well, to their argument, they're building into the flat, like the way their plan is set up.
It probably is a lot easier if we just kinda sketched up a couple of these to, like, a couple of examples. I think we actually talked about that last time, so shame on us for not doing that, but, yeah, in this case, like, for this house, he's got a thirty foot setback. So he could go sixteen feet in, just ignore my math for a minute. He can go either sixteen feet or forty percent of thirty, whatever that number is.
Twelve feet.
Right.
Sounds right.
So on that back lower corner, he can come twelve feet out. On the upper corner, he could come out twelve feet plus probably close to thirty.
Further, further out, but only up to sixteen feet.
Into the required yard, sixteen feet.
Sixteen feet.
Required yard is the setback line to the rear property line. Not that you'd wanna build it that big.
One more time, he could go more than sixteen feet?
Sure, if he's got room in the building envelope, he can.
You can never go more than sixteen feet into the setback. You can never take up more than forty percent of the setback. But if you have, like this guy does, this guy, for example, can come out all the way out here, that's much bigger than sixteen feet. Right? So we're not saying you can't have a deck bigger than sixteen feet.
Well, so, but what if you went to the left corner?
Say again?
If you went to the left corner of that guy's house, of that existing dwelling? So he could go forty percent into the fifteen feet?
Yes.
See, that's where I, I, I just.
That's only, it's only six feet.
Hold on, the way this reads, decker platform not higher than the first floor level of the building may extend into the rear yard a distance of not greater than sixteen feet.
Unless forty percent.
That's what I said fifteen minutes ago. That's exactly what I was saying. I think that that statement, if you put a period at the end of that, now, it, and then it gets confusing because you offer more information after that. What's the intent of this number three statement? And I, I think we don't have to solve it tonight. I really think it needs to be clarified. And I get it, like Ted, you, you've done this a million times. You know what's in your mind, but the problem is the fact that we're sitting here talking about this and everybody's getting confused, I think that it means it needs to have more clarity, that's all.
Okay.
Is this, is this only for single family dwellings, like, so if they're, uh, like I brought up those townhouses earlier, they can have depth, decks of varying lengths then?
Well, they need to be defined as part of the planning process.
Yeah, if they have, I don't think they have lots, so I'd argue that that's, that should all be governed by the land development plan, but.
Alright, I'm sorry, yeah, you're, they're not individual lots, alright, I follow you.
Alright, well, let us, I mean, so let's do this. Let us take another crack at this. We'll try to clarify it. I think it probably does what it sounds like you're okay with. But, I mean, I don't think I hear any, any objection to, like, allowing some projection. But let's, let's tinker with the language a little bit, maybe we can make it more clear. And I don't wanna, I mean, I think we're all probably ready to move on to a different subject, even though this is the last item. Is there any other items that you guys see as needing some work that we can at least dig into before the next meeting?
I don't see anything.
We took out, I, what I think are some of the more, the things that caused a little more concern last time, like limiting the overall size of a garage to no more than fifty percent. We changed some of those types of things, um, to, but we removed them, I should say.
Yeah, we, we went over this big time, half a year ago, whenever it was.
The last, the last time, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I really went to town thinking about it. I've, I'm getting exasperated with it, and I almost hate to bring up anything, but I'm gonna make another statement for you, to leave with you to think about. It seems to me like we're limiting any given structure, its square foot and what that setback should be, unless I'm missing something, uh, you know, what's to stop me from putting ten, two hundred square foot sheds in my backyard? Besides, maybe if I were building a building in the very first place, out of my plans, I might exceed impervious coverage, but so it doesn't seem we're concerned about any given dwelling and its setback, but we're not consider, concerned about having whole multitude of sheds?
Yeah, we don't, we don't deal with it in a cumulative, you're right, like, for example, you could have, in this case, you could have two, two hundred eighty square foot sheds closer to a property line than one of five hundred sixty square feet. I'm not sure, you know, we, even or not, we do play this game in the office, more than any of us would probably like, trying to run down scenarios and interpret things and things like that. I don't, I don't know, is that an issue? I think the idea of limiting a larger structure in the setback is for having you know, a massive building too close to a property line, or two sheds, really that egregious? I don't know.
No, but this, this will let me put five sheds. There's nothing in this ordinance that stops me from putting five two hundred square foot sheds all around the edges of my property.
That's correct.
Yeah, so I, the, again, it's like, like, if I'm being, uh, you know, like a lawyer, right, Dante? What, what do they do? You, you pre-forecast what can go bad and try to cut it off the pass before it ever becomes an issue.
I'm actually blown away by, I'm blown away by your, wha, what's the worst that could happen? That's, that's, that's actually ingenious.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what you do.
I can agree with the limits.
I'm just bringing it up. I, you know, I'm okay. I, I've got two sheds, they're nicely placed on my property. I think that they don't detract from anything, it's no big deal. I'm not against multiple sheds whatsoever, um, but I, I would have some. Um, but I I would have some concern. Of somebody just loading up the their property with sheds and having funky looking things. Maybe because they're just saying I need to have. A thousand square feet, and this is the only way I can do it. And I'm not saying I got, I have the problem solved. I I did present to. To Zach, I believe, half a year ago, a matrix that I thought that made sense, but. And I don't have it memorized, but. And that's fine, I'm just, I'm being like a devil's advocate and just throwing it out there to be thought about.
Jeff, I had one in a previous employee that allowed you twenty five percent of the gross usable floor area, floor area of the principal building. Was the maximum square footage you could have a floor area of an accessory building.
Yeah. Or the max of 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 a cumulative of accessory buildings. You know, I I don't think that's. But I I would. I would be liberal on it to to not take a bunch of freedoms away from our residents, right? But, you know. But you're only doing that to really stop the absurdity ones, you know what I mean? The ones that just try to break. Not break rules because it wouldn't be breaking a rule for them to put five or six sheds under this ordinance. All lining the back of the property. They literally could line the back of the property with sheds. Side by side and go around the whole property according to this ordinance. I don't think we want that. Would it ever happen? Who knows? But it could. All right, well, I'm done talking about that for now.
Are there any other sections in here that you guys see that need a little bit of love? What I heard so far is this section three here, just try to make it more clear. Um, we'll look at the. If there's an easy way to insert something about. In addition to cleaning up chicken waste, chicken feed. Because it does sound like that create could create issues.
All right, well, so we're not, what are we doing here? Are we?
You are giving us directions so that we can initiate the actual. Amendment process, so. You don't need to make a recommendation on this tonight. We got some feedback that we can adjust it for.
What about the first one?
Same thing, we, yeah, same thing. We, we need to get the the board, well, they don't necessarily have to authorize a. Like hearing, but we wanted to get in front of you so we didn't just come back next month and. Have a conversation like this and have to punt another month anyway, so we figured we just get it to you in draft form first.
Okay, all right. Does anybody else have anything to? Say tonight before we adjourn? Can we adjourn?
Uh, from here, this guy.
I'm good.
Zach.
I'm good as well.
I'd like to adjourn the meeting.
All right, thank you.
Hey, thanks a lot.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.